We will come to order. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Allen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and again, good evening. I do want to make an announcement at this time that we do have a public hearing scheduled for 7:30. If anybody is here for the public hearing regarding Summer Drive, the petitioner who asked for this has asked to withdraw. We will, when we get to that, we will be having a discussion, but the petitioner has asked. So, I want to make that clear so nobody hangs around if they don't want to. Thank you. When do we have no invited guests? Thank you. First on the agenda, we have a request from Mr. Minsky for reappointment as a constable. The paperwork for the query is in place. And he, his term expires March 31st. Good evening.
Hi.
Give your name and address. Go ahead.
I'm Paul Minsky, 15 Orchard Road in Swanscourt. I would like to be reappointed as a constable of Saugus. Been doing this for 31 years, and I'd like to stay and do it in Saugus.
Does any of the board members have any questions?
Just one, Mr. Minsky.
Yes.
Good evening. Could you tell me the scope of the work that you currently do as a constable here in our community?
Sure. We serve papers and enforce court orders. We do evictions. There can be arrests. I don't get too involved in them any longer. But subpoenas, summonses, letters that need to be delivered, notices of any kind. We do them all over. I do them all over the place.
But in order to do that here in this community, you must be a constable in this community.
Yep, there are certain things you definitely have to be.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Chairman, I've known Paul for over 30 years, I'm sure now, and I'd like to make a motion, since he's been up in front of us many times before, make a motion to reappoint him as a constable.
Selectman Castaneda, he moves to reappoint Paul Minsky as constable for a three-year term that would expire on March 31st, 2017, seconded by the chair. Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good luck. Next on the agenda, we have Attorney Alba Dodo Baraki regarding a land donation on Walnut Street.
Good evening.
Could you give your name and address, please, for the clerk?
Alba Dodo Baraki, on behalf of Suzanne De Santis, the owner of three parcels of land that she is seeking to donate to the town. I believe that the town Youth and Recreation Department is seeking to perhaps have two of those donated to it, and conservation for the third parcel.
Questions by the board members?
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Dever?
I'm fairly unfamiliar with this piece of property, or actually, these parcels of property. There's a communication tower on one of the pieces of property, is that correct?
I believe there is on one of the parcels.
And is there a lease? And do you know who has that lease? My question would be if we assumed or accepted the donation, would we in fact...
I understand. My client is not, does not have a lease with that company, and I could supply that information. I don't have that with me. I could supply that to the board at a later date.
So, I was thinking about that lease, and who would take responsibility for that, the length of the lease?
Correct.
And the other question I had was the detention basin? In looking at the documentation, the developer was responsible for two years post-development, so there's no responsibility on the part of the person donating for maintenance of that detention basin. So, I guess my question would be, do we assume that liability, Mr. Manager? And do you know the status of the detention basin on the property?
I don't at this time, but I could certainly inquire and find out. I'm not sure what the lease either, what you're referring to is there is...
Is a communication tower on the property?
I believe so, yes. I'm familiar with the area, just not familiar with where the parcels sit in that area, and we can certainly look into it.
I know you've been very, very patient. I see this documentation goes back to before this board was even elected. Would you be willing to get us that information?
Of course.
And let us continue, just for one more week?
Of course.
I would feel more comfortable, Madam Chairman, with having the information before we assume and accept the property. Would that be a fair timeframe, Mr. Manager?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you want to put this on the March 18th?
I would like to, if I could, please.
And you're comfortable with that?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair.
Okay. Want to make a motion on that?
Make a motion to continue this until March 18th?
Seconded by the chair, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is the treasurer-collector, request to have 10 Columbus Avenue foreclosure judgment vacated, Mrs. Hatch.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, board members. This evening, I am here requesting that the board vote to authorize me to have our attorneys go into the land court and file a motion to vacate the foreclosure decree at 10 Columbus Ave. The town secured a lien on the property on September 17th, 2010, for unpaid 2010 real estate taxes. Since that time, the 11, 12s, and 13s rolled into that, and we filed a petition in the land court for foreclosure proceedings on March 29th, 2012, in which we received a judgment on January 2nd, 2014. The owner, former owner of the property, has since come in to the office, and he's paid to the town on March 3rd $23,189.36, which is payment in full for the 10 through 13 taxes, plus all the applicable interest and fees on that. So, this evening, on page two of the correspondence I provided to you earlier in the month, is a motion, which would need to be read by the board, if you so desire, to allow me to file that motion in the land court to vacate the foreclosure and allow the former owners to take possession of the property again.
Mr. Allen?
I'd like to make a motion to allow the judgment for foreclosure dated January 2nd, 2014, to be vacated, and title of property at 10 Columbus Ave. be returned to its former owners, as stated in the foreclosure judgment, based on payment received in the amount of $23,189.36 for outstanding fiscal 2010 to 2013 real estate taxes, with all applicable interests, penalties, and fees.
Seconded by the chair, is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Next on the agenda, we have Angela's Coal-Fried Pizza, request to change manager to Haji Singh. Please give your name and address, correct clerk?
Good evening, everybody.
Your name and address?
I'm Haji, last name is Singh, and the address is 49 Sterling Street, Malden, Mass.
Thank you. I did not see anything on here that jumped out at me. You have been a manager in the past for eight years, is that correct? Why don't you tell us a little bit more about yourself, if you would?
Ask any questions.
Give us a little background on your familiarity?
I was a manager in Cambridge on Western Avenue. We don't serve liquor at that restaurant, just the food and beverages, but the restaurant I'm working right now, we had beer and wine, we served with the food.
The restaurant you currently work in?
Currently working right now. We serve beer and wine in this restaurant.
And what restaurant is that?
Angela's Coal-Fried Pizza.
And so, you have worked, you're not the manager now?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Dever?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Have you had training in safe alcohol serving?
Yes, I am.
Are you certified?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Selectman Panetta?
Good evening. And how long have you been at Angela's Coal-Fire Pizza?
About five years.
So, you've been an assistant manager there?
Assistant manager, right.
So, you've kind of worked your way up?
Correct.
And the Angela's that you're at right now, it's not the one in Saugus?
It's one in the Saugus.
It is the one in Saugus. And so, you've been at that one for five years, and you're just perfect. Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Further questions from the board? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chair?
Selectman Panetta?
I'd like to make a motion for Angela's Coal-Fired Pizza at 880 Broadway regarding the request to change manager to Haji Singh. So, I'm making a motion to accept this change in manager.
Seconded by the chair, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Thank you. You say aye, too, good. That's a great attitude. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next on the agenda is Cliftondale Liquors, request for a change of hours of operation. Could you give your name and address to the clerk, sir?
Good evening. My name's Neil Berman. My address is 109 College Ave., Somerville, and I represent Yashi Inc. and its owner, Rakesh Patel, who I spoke to a couple of days ago, and I was expecting here, but I haven't heard from him. I was out of the office all day. I assumed some kind of an emergency came up. But I think the request here is fairly simple. Cliftondale Liquors was transferred to Yashi Inc. in January pursuant to a hearing we had here the end of November, and at that time, I stated that they weren't going to change the hours. What apparently I didn't know at the time was that the hours that were licensed were not the hours that they were running it. They had cut back the hours. Now, I think they're supposed to tell you when they do, but they apparently had not. And so, when I said they were going to keep the same hours, what I meant was the hours which they were licensed for. When the new license was written up, it was with the hours they were operating. So, what we're asking is that it go back to the hours which this board has, at a prior time, found to be the proper hours for that location. I believe it's better, not only as a business, for business reasons, but also for the community, to have a consistent night, hour of 11, to give people a chance, if they work late or whatever, to be able to get over and get something to drink. So, that's the request. Any questions?
I have a question. You're saying that he's requesting the hours of operation according to what we have, that he wants to extend them, but what you're saying is you made an error on the application, and that the hours that they would have been able to operate would have been up to 11, correct?
Exactly.
My understanding, excuse me, is that a lot of these establishments were initially set when the Sunday openings were allowed, correct? So, I'm not so certain, I wasn't seated on the board, nor were some of the members here, if that 11 o'clock hour that was on that original permit was just based on the process at the very beginning.
Okay.
So, I think that we need to have a discussion. You said the manager's not here this evening?
No, I mean, as I say, I was expecting him to be here, and he's not.
Okay. We did receive a letter in opposition to this, and it is, it is that they would oppose the request for change of hours of operation, and it is signed by Fay Salinas, 26 Beachview Avenue in Saugus. So, I do want to have that recorded. Are there any questions from the members of the board?
Madam Chair?
Selectman Panetta?
I don't necessarily have a question, but I just want to make mention of something, because I gave this an awful lot of thought. I was on the board when we recently, for the liquor store that is on Main Street, the one next to Stop &amp; Shop, and we had a lot of discussion back and forth about the hours. And we allowed them to stay open till, after a lot of debate, 10 o'clock on a Sunday, which the board at that time felt uncomfortable with, but because Stop &amp; Shop was already open, we allowed them to stay open as well. I don't feel comfortable, as one board member sitting here, to allow, at a residential area such as the Cliftondale area, especially on a Sunday night, allowing your establishment to stay open to 11. I mean, we have not discussed this as a board, I mean, we're doing that right now, but my initial feel for a public need, I'm not sure if we have a public, especially in that residential area, so, I mean, again, this is just my initial thoughts, as we're in this process right now, just in discussion.
Sure. Well, as I said, my client, when he bought the place, he had seen the license and was expecting those hours. He considered it to be better business, obviously, to be open as many hours as you can. The Sunday night is probably not going to be a night that's going to be particularly busy anyway, and I suspect we'll be doing a lot of stocking and so forth. He's not here, so I can't speak for him, but I would suggest that if that is one problem, I'm sure something can be worked out with it. It's not, I can't imagine staying open till 11 on Sunday being particularly lucrative.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Castaneda?
You know, I'm looking at the two licenses, and, you know, on the third day of December 2013, this board approved the hours that he's requesting now. Six weeks later, we changed those hours. The same board, same five of us had voted on it. Just a little, I have some discomfort with approving it one month and then disapproving it the second month, and then sticking to that, and I'm not sure what the reason was why we did that in the first place, unless it was just a request, your request at the time. But, you know, based on the fact that we approved it in December, I would have a hard time voting against giving them back those hours that they already had when the new owner purchased the business.
I believe when the change, Selectman Castaneda, is because there was the change in manager. Am I correct?
Change of owner. Change of owner.
The change of owner, and that's...
But it was the same establishment six weeks prior to that, that we granted a specific set of hours.
I see that.
And six weeks later, we changed that, but not...
Makes a lot of sense.
I don't believe it was as a result of our discussion, just an error on the part of the applicant.
Okay. Any other members have questions? Concerns on this?
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Dever?
I think Selectman Panetta brings up a very good point about the residential nature of Cliftondale Square. Although Amato's, I see, has a license till 11:00 p.m. on a Sunday, and they're in the middle of a residential area. I don't feel comfortable either till 11 o'clock, sir. I really don't. That we tend to have problems in Cliftondale Square with congregation of young people, a lot of police presence needed down there. I'm a little concerned about an 11 o'clock closing.
Well, I can only say that the business itself is a fairly quiet business. I'm not sure what goes on in the square, I'll be honest. I don't live in Saugus, I don't, I'm not very aware of that neighborhood. But I do know my client, because I've dealt with him with other liquor stores, and his liquor stores have never had any problems, they're very quiet. It's just a small business, and I don't know what problems there are at the square. I doubt that their liquor store promotes them. That would be my response, so.
Selectman Allen?
I would, I'd be comfortable with the Monday through Saturday to 11 o'clock, but I would consider the Sunday. Sunday, I think, so, I would probably put it more in line with, maybe Notch, maybe the Notch Shor Liquors till, I don't even know if I'd be comfortable at 10 o'clock.
Notch Shor Liquors is open till 10, because it's up near the Stop &amp; Shop.
Right.
Is that correct?
And, Madam Chair?
Selectman Panetta?
And, like Nasty Narnes, which is in a residential area, they close at 6:00, so, I don't, I don't think we have a problem with the 8 o'clock hour. I think it's the, it's the lateness of that particular area, and Selectman Dever makes an excellent point regarding the goings-on in that area, and we do have some concerns. And not that the liquor store is the reason for those concerns, it's just, it may somewhat add to that issue, is all.
I can understand the concern, but as I say, I just reiterate that, first of all, about the hours having changed, the license that they had prior had those hours. They didn't run them, but they had those hours. I didn't know that there would actually have been a change. When we received the license, we were kind of confused as to why the hours were different than we were expecting, and that's why we came to you to request to go back to what it had been. In terms of the square, as I say, I just don't think that a small liquor store is really a problem, even in a residential area. If you were talking about a large bar, I might see where there would be more effect, but it's just people coming and going and buying. I mean, it's, if, if there's anybody hanging out, it's out, excuse me, it's outside, it's not in the liquor store. They're not allowing people to loiter there, and they don't have control over anything else. So...
Madam Chair, it's just the fact that you are open, and you're absolutely right, and they will congregate outside of your store. Not that they will, they may. And that, that is just the concern, that's the concern of some of us. So, do you, do you want to, we have, I think, two decisions, where we could either grant it, we can amend it, or we can wait until the owner comes next week and continue it. But I'm ready to make a suggestion, and we can discuss that, if you want.
And you thought the owner was going to be here this evening with you?
Yes, I spoke to him either Friday or Saturday, and he said he was going to be here, so I don't know what happened. He does have some young kids, so that would be my guess, only because he didn't call me. If it was something at the store, he would have called me, so...
If it was what?
If it was at the store, he would have called me. He's generally at the store at this time, so...
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Dever?
Obviously, we want your business to be successful, and there is a level of discomfort, at least for myself, and I believe Selectman Panetta, at the 11 o'clock closing. Would your, do you believe your client would accept a little later closing, but not the 11 o'clock?
I know he would prefer 11. I suspect he would have, and I can't speak for him, but I think I would be agreeable to the Sunday being brought down a little, because I don't, again, I don't really think Sunday's going to be a particularly busy night for him. But the other nights, 11 is a sort of normal time for liquor stores, and there are people who work late and are going to be swinging by, and his hope is to catch people on their way home, so...
Madam Chair?
Selectman Allen?
I would be, I would be in favor for the, from the Monday through Saturday, to go from the 8 to 11 p.m. I would just want to cut the hours back a little bit on the Sunday evening.
And I, I would agree to that at this point. I can understand that. And then, if down the road, we see that there's never any problems, and he feels that there is business, we can come back and ask for a change, and then have some records, so...
I agree with the selectmen who have spoken regarding the concerns that they have. What would you recommend, anybody have a suggestion on time? I know personally, I think...
I would recommend Monday through Saturday, 8 a.m. to 11 p.m., and then Sunday, noon to 9 p.m.
That's exactly what I wrote down.
That would be seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion?
This is Mr. Patel.
Okay.
Suggesting is everything on Monday through Saturday that you requested, but on Sunday that you'd close at 9:00.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion for Monday through Saturday, the hours of operation, 8 a.m. to 11 p.m., and Sunday, 12 noon to 9 p.m. It's been seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Good luck. Next on the agenda is Cedar Glen Golf, 2014 seasonal license renewal. By all means, please, ma'am. Hi.
My name is Eith Siminacala, 118 Fairchild Drive, Redding. I'm the assistant manager at Cedar Glen. Burton Page and Mary Pike are both under the weather, so I'm the pitch hitter.
Oh, aren't you great? Good, thank you. I've gone through this, I don't have any questions. Do any board members have any questions on this?
Just a quick question, and maybe it was on the packet, but I didn't see it. So, what is your beginning and end date? What is your season?
Our season is when the snow goes away, and we close when the snow comes down.
So, you don't have a particular date? That's why I didn't see it?
No, no. But the license goes, excuse me, from April 1st to November 30th. It's a seasonal license, beer and wine only.
Madam Chair?
Selectman Allen?
And what would the hours of operation be? Hours of operation?
Of operation? I sound very vague. When the sun comes up and when the sun goes down. So, I...
No, no.
Sunday morning in the summer, they're there at 5:30 waiting to go out the door.
So, the, so the establishment will close as soon as there's no golfing?
Right.
They don't stay open afterwards for any period of time?
No, we can, I mean, we do. You know, people come in on a Thursday night, they may sit down, have a beer, and then they move on. I know that's vague, and I don't mean it to sound vague, but we're not an open bar. I mean, it's golfers who are utilizing courts. Is that your question? I'm not sure.
Not, not, not necessarily, but so would you say that you'd be closing maybe 9 o'clock at night, 10 o'clock at night?
Sometimes, the exception to that would be if we had a night tournament.
Madam Clerk, and could you use the mic so folks could hear you at home? Bring it a little closer. Thank you.
This is a license renewal. It's just a straight renewal that was filed on time. Their hours of operation, actually, they are allowed to serve until 1:30 a.m.
Thank you.
Long past my bedtime.
They're not open at that time, though.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve.
Selectman Castaneda moves to approve the application of Cedar Glen Golf for the 2014 seasonal license, seconded by the chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Hope your friends feel better. I'm going to announce again at this time, we are at Citizens Comment, that if you are here for the 7:30 public hearing regarding changes in the traffic rules and regulations for Summer Drive, the petitioner has asked to withdraw. So, I don't want to keep anybody here unnecessarily. Is there anybody here for Citizens Comment at this time? Okay. Next, is there anybody here from Workout World? Tom Pizza is called to the chair. Workout World was actually continued because they hadn't, they had filled out their application, and yet they had not come, this is the second meeting that they have not attended, correct?
And I did leave several messages for them without a return call.
Okay. All right. Being fairly new on the board, how many times do you usually get in touch with these folks before action is taken on the board without their presence? And we can continue it again, but I don't see continuing something, that seems to me a little unusual, that folks would not show up.
Well, really, it's the discretion of the board.
Right. Okay. What are the wishes of the board on the application for Workout World?
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Castaneda?
I threw you to Wendy. Have you had any correspondence with them at all?
I've sent them notice of all the hearings and copies of the recommendations. I also, when they didn't show up at our last meeting, that you actually scheduled a special date to be heard, they, they have not responded to three phone calls.
Madam Chairman, based on that, I'd make a motion to disapprove the recommendation of Workout World. This is the second meet, second consecutive meeting.
You're denying the application, motion to deny?
No, with no, no return calls or correspondence, I'd make a motion to deny it.
I second that. Is there any further discussion by the board?
Madam Chairman, I do have a question.
Madam Chairman, I do have a question. So essentially, they would be operating without a license if we were to vote this this evening. Is there maybe an option to have them contacted and?
We can certainly ask someone to go down.
Because I know they have members and membership, and they may just not realize the gravity of the situation and that it's a very simple procedure. I would, I would hate to throw an entire business and people who've paid for memberships in disarray if we could possibly give it a little more opportunity, whether it be Wendy calling, whether it be the police go down. I mean, obviously, they would be operating without a license at this point.
They are now.
Madam Chair, actually, they're not. The police did notify them when they did not renew their license, which is why this application is here.
Right.
They have not, to my knowledge, been open at 5 a.m.
They have not, okay, so they are still.
The notification, the police did.
I'm sorry?
After the notification from the police department, yes.
So they have not, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Are you comfortable with that then?
I am very comfortable with Selectman Castaneda's motion.
Are there any further questions regarding this? Mr. Castaneda moves to deny the request of Workout World, seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Thank you. First on the public hearings, 7:15 is Aggregate Industries to extend, at 1831 Broadway, to expend, and extend, excuse me, a special permit to allow the removal of earth and rock and to allow the operation of a quarry at Rear Broadway in Whittier Avenue. Assessors Plan 2030, Lot A61, Assessors Plan 2031, Lot A122, for a period of six months. Good evening, Attorney Magnin.
Madam Chair, any members of the board? For the record, Attorney Richard Magnin with an office at 194 Central Street here in Saugus, representing Aggregate Industries. With me this evening is Scott Colby, Senior Real Estate Specialist, and Steve Fox, Quarry Manager. The application is the customary application to extend the S2 permit for removal of earth and rock and to allow for the operation of a quarry for a period of six months. An updated plan from Hancock Engineering has, had been submitted with the application for the extension, as is required. I note the comments from the different department heads indicated no objections. The payment of the fee due for, for this permit will be made within, within the week. We just spoke to Wendy, actually, and the check is in Mr. Colby's office and should have it by the end of the week. The only blasting activity since the last time we were here, it was one small blast in December. They just wanted to preserve their grandfather rights, so they just pop one off, and there's no, it's not a working type of blast, and that's pretty much it. The fences are checked regularly, as is required, and all those multiple conditions that are part of the S2 remain, remain in effect.
Questions from members of the board?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Dever.
Good evening. I'm hoping you can answer just a few questions. Any short or long-term plans for the quarry at this point?
I think I'll ask Mr. Colby to address that question.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Scott Colby. I'm the Environmental and Land Services Manager for Aggregate Industries. You ask a very interesting question about long-term plans for the quarry itself. We are currently meeting with a committee, a reclamation committee, that's been formed by the board to discuss what it is that we expect to be able to do with the quarry over the long term. There are existing reserves remaining in the quarry that at some point we would like to extract. Our business is really economic-driven. When, when the economy is booming, we do very well. When it isn't, we don't do so well. We have a lot of other quarries in addition, so right now, we're not actively mining the quarry. We do, the permit that's before you for renewal tonight is for just two parcels that are in sort of the back end of the quarry. The good majority of the quarry itself is grandfathered for mining, and that's where we did our blast this past December. To get to your question, though, specifically, is this committee that's been formed is, is the Quarry Reclamation Committee, formed by members and, by members of the town of Saugus and, and officials as well. And the purpose of that is to determine whether or not we want to try and reclaim the quarry, which means, in essence, fill it with dirt and do some mining in conjunction with that reclamation. And that's what we're discussing now. We've had a fill, a fill management plan prepared, which is being independently peer-reviewed, and the, and the Quarry Reclamation Committee is looking at their comments now. So the meetings are ongoing, and we've been meeting with them for over two years as well, so this is a long-term process.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Dever.
I just have two more questions, if I could, sir. Who's on this reclamation committee from the town of Saugus?
It's chaired by Bill Lucy.
Okay.
Formerly Janet Lucy, who I had known since I got this job and have had great respect for, and she was extremely helpful. Richard, do you have everybody's name that is on it? Since Janet's demise, there's been a bit of a delay in the committee's meetings. We have not met for probably six or seven months. Scott has been a regular member, Scott Crabtree, but I, you know, I'm not quite sure whether it's been shuffled around or whatever, but.
Excuse me. I believe we appointed Mr. Lucy to serve in the position that his wife currently held.
And if I could just ask you one other question? There's been some transfer of land up in that area recently, in the last couple of months?
Correct.
Could you tell me a little bit about that?
We, if you may or may not know, but we are a tenant of Frank Gaffader, who owns 1715 Broadway, is a brick office building there. That's where our regional headquarters are for the Northeast Region. It just so happens that the quarry area is, in essence, behind that office building. We had a parcel that was adjacent to the quarry that he needed for parking, and he had a parcel that was sort of jutted out into the quarry that made sense for us to, to own. So we did basically a no monetary land swap with him. That's what that was.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate your answers.
No problem.
Good Mrs. Dever. Further questions from members of the board?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Panetta.
Thank you. And the quarry close date, I know that there's, the committee, there was some literature that was passed out at some point when I was on the board. Is it like 25 years?
Oh, it's, it's totally up in the air. There's been nothing decided with the committee, and we have ongoing discussions with them at the moment, so. We've been throwing years and dates and everything back and forth, but there's certainly been no decisions made.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Selectman Allen, Selectman Castaneda, any questions?
I have no questions.
What are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Panetta.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Selectman Panetta moves to close the public hearing, seconded by the chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
Madam Chair.
Selectman Panetta.
I'll make a motion for Aggregate Industries, Industries Inc., 1831 Broadway, to extend special permit S2 to allow the removal of earth and rock and to allow the operation of a quarry at Rear Broadway in Whittier Ave. Assessors Plan 2030, Lot A61, Assessors Plan 2031, Lot A122, for a period of six months under the same conditions that they've been working under.
Motion is seconded by the chair. Further discussion?
Madam Chairman, public hearings.
She did motion to close it. Oh, I do apologize. Does anybody in the audience want to speak in favor and opposition? Moving way too fast. We shouldn't have closed that. I have to, I am so sorry. I'm taking your motion back. Seeing none, let's start this all over again. Mrs. Panetta moves to close the public hearing, seconded by the chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you so much, Mrs. Dever. Mrs. Panetta moves to extend the, S2 permit for the period of six months, seconded by the chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes five to zero. I do apologize.
Madam Chairman, roll call.
Oh, it's a roll call, yeah.
I'm really making a mistake on this tonight, aren't I?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Castaneda?
Yes.
Ms. Dever?
Yes.
Ms. Panetta?
Yes.
Ms. Viella?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think we're good now. Thank you.
Good luck.
Good night, thank you.
Good night. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for EKB Corporation Do-Of Business as Sully Sees Bar and Grill, 168 Broadway, to amend existing license by allowing two additional coin-operated Good evening, Attorney Gregson.
Judge Gregson, 325 Central Street, Saugus. I'm representing EKB and the Sully's, the bar there. We're looking for two more, there's three now, pool tables. They're coin-operated, you put in a coin, and the ball come up, and you set them up and you play. Obviously, there's been a lot of demand for them, or they wouldn't be looking for two more, but they are looking for two more. This was submitted to all of your boards and commissions, and everybody was in favor of it. Nobody was objected to it. And the one, only objection, it wasn't an objection, it was a caution, don't block the door. Well, obviously, you're not going to block the door, but that's one of the objections or statements. They certainly have a lot of room where they're going to put them, but they put on a map where they're going, and they're right beside the other three. Three, and then two written right in parallel line. And it's a popular sport, non-harmful, and not even fattening. So it's a good sport, I guess. I don't play it too often. I got one, but I don't play it too often. The, the other thing they have in there, they have a dot room where they play dots, and they have teams that come in to play against teams from here. Really, it's a sports bar, and that's what it's doing. And we'd like to have it approved so that they can move on.
Questions from members of the board?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Dever.
Good evening, Mr. Gregson.
Good evening, my dear.
You state they have three and would like two more coin ops?
Yes.
Their license is for seven, if I'm reading it correctly.
Oh, that's coin-operated, that counts other things.
Okay.
Of that, only three of them.
Oh, okay, alrighty. And did I hear you say it was for coin ops, not pool tables?
It is.
It is for pool.
You have to pay to play.
So, okay, now I understand. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm not being clear. I've got one, but I don't charge anyone to play it.
Selectman Panetta.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm assuming from looking at this diagram that you sent, thank you very much for that. Did you have to move some seats out of the way to make room for the pool table?
No.
Or did you just have this as vacant area within the restaurant?
There was a lot of vacant areas that aren't. You have a limitation of 200, I believe, of the seats, and this isn't going to affect your seating at all.
Okay.
It's, Fred mentioned it too. So they, we're all aware, you have to be careful about that. You can't have too many, and the tables won't take the place.
So the, when I'm looking at the map, not that the people at home can see it, but there's three pool tables here, and then there's two down here. Is it these two here that are going to be the new ones?
Yes.
And this was just all empty space before?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Selectman Allen.
I have no questions. I'll make a motion.
I have no questions.
There's no other questions.
Selectman Allen. Well, first, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak in favor or in opposition to the application? Seeing none?
Seeing none. I'll make a motion for EKB.
Make a motion to?
Close the public hearing.
Oh, to close the public hearing.
Seconded by the chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Selectman Allen.
Okay, now I'll make a motion for EKB Corporation DBA Sully Sees Bar and Grill, 168 Broadway, to amend existing license by allowing two additional coin-operated devices.
Seconded by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Next on the agenda is the public hearing on amending the town's traffic rules and regulations, Article 5, Section 13, by designating handicap parking only at the following location in front of Number 14 Summer Drive. We did have a request from the petitioner to withdraw.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I would make a motion this evening to allow the petitioner leave to withdraw per the petitioner's request.
Seconded by the chair. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Next on the agenda under old business is, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is the update regarding the use of the cemetery garage. We do have a letter here from the chairman of the Cemetery Commission, and the update states the cemetery garage and other items, the garage per the open action for update on March 11th. Selectman, meaning I'm pleased to notify the selectman, this town manager has plans in place to vacate the cemetery garage of emergency aid equipment by the end of April to allow normal operations of the cemetery starting May 1st, 2014, in time for effort to get ready for Memorial Day. We will continue to work with the town manager to remove unneeded containers, et cetera, to address the optics and operations. Other items for update and info, backhoe update, town manager and superintendent have backhoe on list for replacement under the capital improvement plan. If for some reason this process is delayed, then the town manager will seek alternative funding sources to replace or lease a backhoe, but we all hope the capital improvement plan will be accepted and funded to make larger purchases for the total needs of the town. New land for new cemetery. We will need the help of town manager, school committee, and selectmen to put independent engineering consultant group on contact to complete another survey of curly property to address once and for all the school, if the school is feasible on that property. This was suggested by school, the school committee at the special town meeting when the article to transfer the property to the Cemetery Commission was referred to the town manager. We also found that no one can put a binding question on a ballot for transfer due to state and Saugus laws, by laws, charges, et cetera, so the only way to transfer this property is by a two-thirds vote at town meeting, respectfully submitted by Joseph Dennis Gould, chief person. He was hoping to be this, here this evening, and unfortunately, he wasn't able to attend, but he did want to make certain that we were aware of his feelings on this. He does feel that it's moving in a positive direction. Is there something you want to add to this, Mr. Manager?
I don't have anything at this time.
This is an update, so Selectman Dever.
If I could just, first of all, thank Mr. Gould and the Cemetery Commission for their hard work, and thank the manager for finding a workable resolution to this, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments by board members?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman.
Through you to the town manager. It says you're going to vacate the cemetery. What's going to happen with the, the equipment and everything that's being stored there for emergency management now? There's a few pieces of equipment that need to be garaged, and we're going to look at some space up at the DPW. Their garage up there, there's a couple of, I think they have a Jeep. We're also looking at consolidating, and most of the vehicles that they have are not, there's not a, a need to be garaged, per se. And what about all the supplies, and where do those go? Same thing, we're going to find out.
The DPW?
Yeah, we're going to find out where they're from now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Madam Chairman, if I could just follow up on Selectman Castanetti's question. Mr. Manager, are you looking to do, down the road, a plan, a permanent plan for emergency management? I know right now you have them at the Public Safety Build-in Meeting, but are you looking at some point down the road to a permanent home for them in a plan?
We're looking at a couple of different options for permanent garage space or some other alternative to that.
Thank you. Further questions? Next under Old Business is the tumble-in grease trap plan. I need to give your name and address to the clerk.
Good evening, Laurie Kuna, 134 Alvin Street, East Boston, Mass.
Thank you. This is for an extension, on top of the extension, on top of the extension. But I think that, having spoken to somebody who has a little more knowledge than me, that the Board considered just continuing this in abeyance until we have this grease trap issue. We just request, so that you don't have to keep coming back and making the request. Once we get the information that you need, and as I say, you've been very, very patient, then we'll come back and we'll have that discussion on the original request. Does that make more sense to you folks?
Thank you very much.
So, could I have that in the form of a motion?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Selectman Dever moves to extend the grease trap plan, the external grease trap, we have just extended their request, correct? Could you please explain to me what you're looking at me for? It's okay. Just tell me the wording you want me to use, I'm extending the...
Put it held into, I'm sorry, held in abeyance.
We're just going to hold this in abeyance, correct?
Yes.
Okay, seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. You don't have to come to every meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
But they like coming.
Okay, next under Old Business is the FY '15 budget. The Board did vote to forward the budget as required under the Charter on March 1st to the Finance Committee. I believe I've given all of you the information that was forwarded by the, no, right here. This was forwarded by the Collector Treasurer, because as you recall, when we had our discussions, the recommendations of the Board, the number didn't truly match up to the figures based on a 52.3 week versus a 52 week. So, the reconciliation amount is $44,230, excuse me. The reconciliation of the budget was a $44,233,116. The difference, I believe, was about $40,000. I have here $40,497.
I believe so.
Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Does the Board want to make any amendments and recommendations to bring this budget into balance to forward to the FinCom?
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Allen?
I mean, I would be in support to utilize the leftover funds to maybe use it as a backup for the ice and snow removal, just in case we do go over.
I know, I'm going to jump a little bit ahead here. Mr. Manager, I know you probably couldn't give us a defined figure, it's way too soon, but clearly, the budget is going to...
Yeah, as far as the snow and ice. So, to date, and we're still one of the storms, I think on 2/18, those invoices are not in as of yet, and we have some school invoices that are still outstanding, but we're north of $750,000 now, and then obviously, I think we have a storm coming on Thursday, so obviously, the goal is to try to pay out of the free cash that we have, but I think we're probably becoming increasingly close to that number to be able to fund that in this year. That's as far as, I mean, there'll be invoices coming in, so I think, you know, that's just sort of a raw estimate.
Madam Chairman, since we're so far over the budget for snow, which we, I guess we all expect it anyway. It's not over yet, I guess, either, is it? But why don't we take that money and use it, give it to the schools to offset some of the user fees that the kids' families have to pay now? I know there's been some money allocated to that, but another $44,000 may save some kids from not being able to play sports if we can pay off some of those user fees for them.
That's substitute motion.
Was that, did you make that in the form of a motion?
It was an emotion, it was just up for discussion.
It was a motion, that was just a suggestion, you didn't make it, okay?
Then if that was a motion, I'll make a substitute motion.
It was an emotion.
It was not, so you are making a motion...
Okay, all right. Then I'll make the motion.
To incorporate the remaining funds...
I'd be okay with that.
To the school department.
To the school department, to be used...
To be used, to...
Hopefully, to offset user fees for...
The athletic, okay, the user fees, okay. That's a motion seconded by the Chairs, there further discussion, any of the members?
Madam Chair, from, just as a follow-up to our last budget meeting?
Yeah.
I mentioned that I spoke with Town Council, and Selectman Dever made a very good point and said we all should have the same information, so I asked Town Council for his opinion regarding the professional service line item that's in the Selectman's budget, and based on his opinion, I will be voting, just as I did the last time, I'll be voting no on this budget. Thank you.
I respect that, and as we've discussed at the previous meetings, we are all keenly aware of the Charter and the restrictions of the Charter. However, we feel that it is a team approach, and if we present this to FinCom and to Town Meeting and working together with the town manager, again, this was something that had been brought up in the past, nobody is trying to supersede the Charter. I did read the legal opinion that you received on March 5th from the Town Council, and again, we all respect this, nobody's trying to circumvent the Charter, but I respect your vote, that you choose to vote no. I think that we can have that discussion. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chairman?
Madam...
I do want to thank Selectman Panetta for sharing the legal opinion with the Board, again, dated March 5th, when we took our vote at the end of February as required by the Charter. But I agree with the Chairman that there's a very, there's a very strong need for a conversation with the Finance Committee and with Town Meeting, and professional services are throughout this budget. So, again, I agree that we are not trying to circumvent the budget, I mean, the Charter, but we do want to have a conversation, and I think that it's important that the Finance Committee and Town Meeting be allowed that conversation and the reasons that we feel as strongly as we do.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Mr. Castanetti's motion to take the remaining funds and suggest that they be put, I recommend that they be put into the school department's budget to offset user fees, will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Is this a two-part question? Is this, are you going to ask for that question and then you're going to ask to for the whole budget?
Yes.
Okay, so...
You're voting on, you just said you're voting no on his...
Oh, I'll vote yes on his, but I'm going to vote no on the overall budget. If you're going to, because if you have to...
We have to vote the balanced budget, as you know, so we're going to take it this way, have to, when we took our vote, we had stated that we knew, because we didn't have the numbers from the Collector Treasurer, which she has since provided, that we had to move that forward to FinCom by March 4th.
What are you going to do, two votes or one vote?
I can absolutely do the two votes, so you want...
Okay, so I'll say yes for this vote.
The motion was to take, wasn't on the budget, the motion was to take that particular figure and to recommend that it be put in the school department's budget to offset the user fees, so that's where it is.
That's a yes.
Okay, so let's take a step back. Mr. Castanetti moves to move the remaining funds to the suggested, excuse me, to recommend that they be put in the school department's budget to offset user fees. Seconded by the Chair, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now the vote would be one, and I don't think I have my final budget number here, do you have your final budget? The total recommended by the Board of Selectmen total would be, no, this would not be correct. What did Mr. Manager know?
I'm sorry, I don't have that talking.
No, because the budget is 81, this is not correct. This 44 million is not correct.
Madam Chairman, would you like a motion for a two-minute recess?
Yes, please.
Make a motion for a two-minute recess?
To order, and we're back on the budget, we need to vote the bottom-line figure for the balance. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Dever?
I will make a motion that the operating budget, which will be transmitted to the Finance Committee with the adjusted figure, will remain the same at $81,030,534, with the adjustments that you have described, with the additional funding going for snow and ice.
No.
No?
Athletic.
Athletic, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, athletic user fees.
That is seconded by the Chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda under New Business, annual town meeting is on May 5th, 2014. We need to set a date to close the warrant, and the date that is being recommended is April 8th, so we want to get the information out there to the public that the warrant for the annual town meeting is closing on April 8th. Next, we have on the agenda the status of snow and ice deficit. I think you pretty much brought us up to speed on that, Mr. Manager, so we'll go into the town manager's report surrounding community status update.
Just to give an update on the surrounding community status regarding the casinos with Everett, the possibilities now of either Wynn Casinos in Everett or the Mohegan Sun in Revere. As most are probably aware, that the Board of Selectmen and the manager and town officials have been meeting with Mohegan Sun. As everyone's aware, we've been designated as a surrounding community through their application process and through some meetings. We are continuing to negotiate with them in working out the, identifying the impacts to the community, as well as mitigation in regard to that. So, that's, that, those meetings and those negotiations are continuing. We're hopeful that we'll be able to come to a mutually agreeable agreement, and it should be noted, I think, regarding the Mass Gaming Commission, they have different timelines set, and because of the Boston situation, those, some of those timelines now have been pushed up, some of them, I think, just recently, the other day was pushed another 30 days, which, an update on the Wynn Everett Casino, as people are aware, the town petitioned for surrounding community status because we weren't designated within their application, and we felt that there would be some impacts to the, to the community, therefore, we petitioned the Mass Gaming Commission. We did have a hearing back some time ago, and some of those deadlines for the Mass Gaming Commission to make a decision on whether we would be designated as a surrounding community with Wynn Everett, they haven't made that decision yet, and they've pushed those dates out also. So, that's, that's the status and updating, and we will continue to meet and represent the community and the residents in the quality of life issues here in the town. Just another note to update is that the Mohegan Sun will be, the Board and myself have facilitated the Mohegan Sun representatives to be in contact with the Saugus Chamber of Commerce and the businesses, and they're putting together a meeting, sort of a business-to-business meeting for opportunities for vendors and for their rewards in the event that they are awarded a license. They will be, you know, giving information and allowing businesses in Saugus to sign up with the casino.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Dever?
I'd just like to thank the town manager and the members of the Board who have spent countless hours over the last several months making sure that Saugus's interests are represented, and I don't think anyone realizes just how many hours you and Selectman Allen and the town manager have put in on this issue.
Just to further that, is that, so that you get a sense of what's still pending, is that Mohegan Sun has reached some tentative, some agreements, I think Chelsea, they have an agreement with Chelsea, and they have some tentative agreements in principle that aren't public with some of the other communities that they designated as surrounding communities. Boston, Winthrop, and Saugus, we're still continuing to come up with those terms and conditions at this point.
Madam Chairman, if I could just, I apologize, Selectman Panetta, just one question. Mr. Manager, do you have any idea when you feel this will be done? I mean, I know the number of hours that are being spent on it, do you feel a few months? How long do you see these negotiations going?
Well, I think part of it is, part of how negotiations work is that sometimes the timelines and the deadlines is what motivates people to sort of come to a mutual agreement and maybe give concessions or whatnot in a general negotiation. Part of, is that the Gaming Commission has moved out the deadlines, but there is a deadline set, and I'm not sure what is, it's another, I think it was supposed to be March...
Does June sound right to you now?
What's that?
Does June sound right to you now?
I would think it'd probably be prior to that, because they're also up against a deadline to make a decision so that they can move forward with one of these locations to actually do the build-out and to move on, in progress, but I would, you know, the other issue is that they have a timeline also. If you're not able to come to an agreement, there's an arbitration process, which is, just to sort of explain that a little bit, which I think is advantageous to coming to an agreement, because the way it's set up is that you would have your final and best offer, so that if, they would only choose from one or the other proposals, and if one is, obviously, they feel is taking into all, into consideration all the different factors, other surrounding community agreements, what's included in those, but they would take the one that they think is more reasonable, the Gaming Commission, to make a decision on it, so that sort of when you get into that process, you are more likely to make something more reasonable that would be the one that would be selected, rather than being more extreme when sometimes that's how, you know, negotiations start off. But I would say it's on a track that the deadline for the Mass Gaming Commission will dictate whether an agreement is reached or there's an arbitration process, and then a deadline that they make a decision on which proposal to accept, so that they can stay on track with issuing the licenses to whichever community, whichever community and casino they choose.
Thank you.
Ms. Panetta, did you have a question?
I just had a comment, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention that the Saugus for Waterway Council is, we have a deadline of Friday to put all our comments into, so there's, they're getting a lot of environmental organizations to commenting on the impact of the Mohegan Sun Casino, so I just wanted just to make mention of that.
Mr. Manager, was there anything else that you wanted to bring up this evening?
And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, February 11th. Does anybody have any corrections?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes, subject to changes or corrections by the Board.
Selectman Castanetti moves to accept the minutes of February 11th, subject to any changes or corrections by members of the Board. Seconded by the Chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman...
Would make a motion to table the minutes of February 12th until our next meeting?
Selectman Dever moves to table the February 12th meeting until the next meeting, seconded by the Chair.
Madam Chairman, can I ask, why are we tabling the minutes? Did I miss something, or?
They were, they needed to be updated. We had gotten an incorrect set of minutes, and we don't have a hard copy.
Got it.
Thanks.
Thank you. All those in favor of table, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is the minutes from February 25th.
Madam Chair?
Selectman Panetta?
I will make a motion to accept the minutes dated February 25th, 2014. I will make a motion to accept the minutes dated February 25, 2014.
Seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Next in your packet, you do have the applicants for the Cemetery Commission, the Library Board of Trustees, the Zoning Board of Appeals. I would like the boards just... I don't know if everybody's had a chance to completely review all these resumes, and perhaps we can take this up on the 18th of March?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Selectman Castanetti moves to go for the... move the appointments from the February... March 11 agenda to the March 18. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And also again, we need to review all of the commission and appointments. I just spoke to the Town Manager, and he is also going to be doing the same thing on his end, reviewing with his administrative assistants and office personnel to determine where we're at with various boards and commissions that fall under his authority.
Madam Chairman?
Selectman Dever.
Could I just ask, did the manager get a copy of the updated list that Wendy put together of all the boards and commissions? Great.
Thank you.
Might make it a lot easier.
It wasn't in my bag.
Thank you. That brings us to members' comments. We can start with Selectman Allen.
A while back, we created two sets of subcommittees, one for the Capital Improvement Plan and one for the Economic Development. And with the restrictions that a subcommittee actually has, and because of all the obligations that we do have, we're in... in some cases, we may substitute each other to make the coverage of these meetings. I would like to change the title from "Subcommittees" to "Subteams," and I'd like to put that in the form of a motion, if I could, please.
Mr. Selectman Allen moves to change the Selectmen's Subcommittees to Selectmen's Subteams, seconded by the Chair. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Was there anything else you wanted to bring up this evening, Mr. Allen?
Oh, my...
Okay.
No.
Next, Mrs. Dever.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
I'm sorry. There was, because I forgot we've got all our comments going on. I just... I did. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to... I'm going to pass out these to everybody on the board. This is the Saugus Public Library did their digital documents, and there's some really interesting things. If you look at it going... if you go through the lists, and they can get this off of their website, but it covers a whole lot of things, from service records to the World War veterans, veterans, people who are actually buried in Saugus, but it goes on to Saugus history, yearbooks for people who graduated from Saugus high schools and so forth and so on. So it's pretty interesting. I've already gone through some of these, and it's fun to go back. Records go all the way back to the early 1800s. And then all the other comments that I would like to make is with the libraries, the children's room, they're supported by the Saugus Cultural Council, who gives them a grant every year, and they've got quite a few good programs going on. They've got one coming up on March 14, which is the Nappy Puppets. That's at 10:30 a.m., and this is all for the children's programs. On April 23 at 2 p.m., Mike the Bubble Man, which is interesting. June 19 at 3:30, and also at 4:20 p.m. is the Curious Creatures, and most of the kids actually love that one. July 11 at 11 a.m. is the Magician, which is Scott Jameson. He's actually very good with the children. August 20 at 10:30 a.m. will be the Whale Mobile. So this is also posted on their website, so I would strongly recommend that people take a look at this, especially the folks with the young children. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Dever.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First, I'd like to make a motion to invite Mr. Eric Lucier from Whale Breiter Inn. As you know, back in January, Whale Breiter donated six automatic electronic defibrillators, and I'd like to invite them into our next meeting, either the meeting, not the 18th, but the ones in April, to see if they could come in so we could properly thank them for their donation. So I would make that in the form of a motion.
Selectman Dever moves to invite Mr. Lucier from Whale Breiter to our April meeting to thank him for their donations of eight AEDs, was it?
I believe it was six.
Six AEDs, seconded by the Chair. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Madam Chairman, the second thing that I have this evening, it is not a motion, but it... a number of us were... had the benefit of attending the legislative breakfasts held by the YMCA and the Belmonte Middle School. There were a number of pieces of legislation that are pending that would both benefit the Y's and our libraries. What I'd like to do is ask Wendy to make copies for everyone, and in our next meeting, after you've had an opportunity to review them, consider sending a letter to our state delegation to support these pieces of legislation. So I will give that off to Wendy. The legislation is very far-reaching. It's additional funding for the libraries. It's funding for programs for children who are at risk early in early school-age funding, 51A children who are benefit... you know, who are suffering from 51As. There are programs available. So they're looking for additional funding. So I'll get that off to Wendy. And I only have one other question, if I could, Mr. Manager. The bucket truck, I understand it's down, and we've accepted a few banner requests. Do you know if we have a backup plan to put the banners up that we did accept?
I'll check into it.
Okay.
I thought they... the last I heard from the director, they were doing some repairs on it, but...
Because I think there's two or three banners that we had approved. And the last thing that I have, Mr. Manager, I know you said it would probably most likely be a special town meeting, but can we get a status on the bylaw for noise and odor?
The... I can give you an update. We just recently had this conversation. The Board of Health, I believe at their last meeting, went through it, and they made some suggestions for changes with the attorney, and those changes are being made. So it actually, I think, I believe they have a meeting scheduled on April 7, and you have a meeting on April 8. So I think they're hoping to be finalized, so it would actually probably go in within the annual.
That would be wonderful, because it would give the Board of Health the tools they need over the spring, summer, and fall, so that people down in that area of town do not go through what they went through last year. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Selectman Dever. Selectman Panetta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two things this evening. The first is, I was really curious on what was going on with the sand down on Route 107, and there was a lot of discussion, and there was that neighborhood group that got together, and they were very concerned. They didn't want the sand removed, and as we all know, it was decided that the sand will be removed. But nobody in Precinct 10 or Precinct 3, nobody has really had any sort of an update on what was going on. And what I recently found out was that they're looking for a start date of April 1. I mean, that is still in flux, but that's what it looks like. I mean, this is going to, of course, impact traffic, noise, for that whole neighborhood. And we really... I would like to see some sort of restoration plan, a timetable for... so that we know, and that we could tell the residents on what's going on, because there was all that activity, and everybody was going to the meetings, and then it just kind of all stopped. So what I'd like to do is make a motion this evening to invite the Department of Conservation and Recreation, the DCR, to come to one of our meetings, so that, under the care and control agreement, they're supposed to be informing the board of what's going on. So if it's okay with the board, I would...
Just ask Wendy to put it on for...
Okay, just put it on.
Put... just forward the information to Wendy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have the address and all that information.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay. And the last... thank you. The last thing is, speaking of the library, I have noticed that we have somebody coming, Anthony Samaco, and he wrote quite a few books on the history of Howard Johnson's, and that's tomorrow night at the library at 7 p.m. And I don't know, I grew up with Howard Johnson's, and they were on every corner. In fact, I think, I don't know if it's the last one of the messages, but they just closed one in the Fenway area. I drive by it every day to work. So I found this really interesting. And he's a noted historian and author of, like I said, over 60 books on the history and development of Boston, and he teaches history at the Urban College of Boston. And his latest book is The History of Howard Johnson's and How Massachusetts sort of Foundation Became a Roadside Icon. So it's a free program, and it sounds really interesting, so I just wanted to mention it this evening. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Panetta. Selectman Castanetti.
Madam Chairman, the only thing I have, I'd like to congratulate all the new recruits to the Police Department and the Fire Department. And if you don't mind, I'd like to recognize them by name, so folks know who we've added to the force. For the Fire Department, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Anthony Aroni, Mr. John Carosa, Mr. Ryan Pousard, Mr. Corey Rutledge, Mr. Dennis San Giorgio, Mr. Michael Leary, Mr. Michael Pross, Mr. Kenneth Powers, Mr. Michael Ferreira, and Mr. Stephen Morando. And I believe every one of them is from Saugus. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we've done our part in employing Saugus residents on the Fire Department anyway.
Just to add to that, we're going to be setting something up to do a... for them to sign the book. So once that's scheduled, I'll let the board know. They have different... a different tradition than the police, as far as the police is... that's generally done after they pass the academy. In the fire, they do it sometime after they start or the first day, which they haven't started yet, so...
Thank you.
And for the Police Department, Madam Chairman, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Alexander Klamarchek and Ms. Lisa Muji for being added to the Police Department roles. So congratulations to everybody. Welcome aboard.
Very nice.
That's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. I have a few announcements. The Saugus Board of Selectmen will hold a public forum to discuss the rules and regulations to govern the operation of Saugus cable television on Tuesday, March 18, 2014, at 7 p.m. This is at the Town Hall Auditorium, 298 Central Street. The Selectmen, we did state that this would be an open process with public participation, and we encourage the public to attend and offer input. This has been posted, and it has been sent to the media. You will notice on our next meeting, which is this coming Thursday, we have a meeting scheduled that will entail the Economic Development Coordinator making a presentation to the board, and then after that, we do have an executive session that we need to go into. The term that we needed to use to go into executive session was to... it was regarding negotiations with non-union personnel. This deals with the Board of Directors for SCTV, and I wanted to clear up that there seemed to be some misunderstanding out there as to what this executive session was all about. This has to deal with SCTV, and we needed to speak to our attorney, because when we reached out, and this is... this isn't a pleasant topic to bring up, but I am going to raise the issue. We had reached out, as most of you know, we did have to rescind our vote of going from SCTV to SETS. We rescinded our vote. It was contingent upon SETS rescinding their vote to dissolve their 501(c)(3). The third part of this process, according to the attorney, was that then both boards needed to get together, and we had talked about it at our board, of involving the public. Well, I don't know... I have not spoken directly to the chairman of the Cable Board, but they have retained an attorney to represent their interests. Anything concerning this, they wanted sent there. That being said, we have sent them the letter, and we have asked them to please join us on March 18 at 7 p.m., so that we can work collaboratively as a community and do its right for the entire Saugus community. This vote was... 87% of the voters in November have supported this, and so they've been waiting very, very patiently for this to take place. We hope you'll all attend. The next announcement I have to make is that the Town of Saugus FY 2013 Annual Report is now available. Copies may be obtained from the Board of Selectmen's Office during regular office hours, which are Monday through Thursday, 9 a.m. to 3 p.m. The report will also be available online on the Town of Saugus website, Board of Selectmen. And for further information, you can certainly contact Wendy Reed, our clerk, at 781-231-4124, or at wreade@saugus-mass.gov. Thank you. The next announcement, this is really an update. As many of you are probably aware, the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen have been meeting regarding a statement of interest that needs to be presented to the school building authority. And the work that a core group have done on this is absolutely remarkable. And I know of one particular person that's here in this room today that's worked very, very hard and is very humble, and that's our clerk, Wendy Reed. They have been meeting at 7 o'clock in the morning. You have administrators from the high school. You have town meeting members involved in this, both boards, the Selectmen and the School Committee. The Town Manager is involved, the Police Department, the Fire Department. The community has a very wide cross-section that have been working very diligently on this. You also have, excuse me, another member of the School Committee here, Mr. Arthur Grabowski, who has been attending the meetings and giving the input. The following dates are the scheduled meetings. The meetings will be on Monday for the month of March at 6 p.m., and we just had our meeting last night. It'll be on the 17th, the 21st, and the 24th, and the 31st. And the target date to finalize the statement of interest is March 31, and the target date to vote is April 3. And the committee, which is again comprised of School Committee members and superintendents, Selectmen, Town Managers, school personnel, and town meeting members who have committed themselves to be certain that this is a successful application, are asking all to attend the meetings that show the interest, and you can also watch them on the local cable. I think I have covered it all.
Madam Chair, can I ask you a question on that?
You most certainly can.
Thank you. At the last meeting that I attended, they talked about having a Saturday walk-through and inviting the public.
Yes.
Was that date set?
Yes, excuse me. It is. It's March 29, correct, Ms. Reed? It is March 29. And they have a committee that is working. It's a scavenger hunt, and it is a tour through the school. And I believe there's five members on that committee, correct, Ms. Reed? And representing the Board of Selectmen on that committee is Selectman Allen. And so I think it's going to be a great opportunity for people to come out. The... what they addressed at our most recent meeting was the building envelope, the background, and a couple of the priorities. So it's moving along very well, and people are working very, very diligently.
Is there a time?
Is there a time for the walk-through?
8:30 a.m.
8:30.
8:30. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Is there any other comments that members of the board would like to make? Seeing none. We now come to Citizens' comments. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the board? Seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chairman.
Selectman Castanetti moves to adjourn, seconded by the Chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you so much, and good night.